So as a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau?
Present.
John Samia?
Present.
Morris DiPaolo?
Present.
James Kane?
Present.
The school committee will be joining us at 7:30, so I'm going to move on and talk, call staff. Please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar?
Present.
And Valerie Clemmie?
Present.
This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet posted on the town's website identifying how publicly joined. Please be sure to press star six to mute your device. This meeting will not feature public comment. And each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So we are going to get started. For those of you that are tuning in, this is the March 16th, 2021 joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee. The Board of Selectmen has one item to take care of prior to the School Committee joining us for 7:30. So we are going to start with our first item, which is to review and act on the Community Preservation Committee bylaw proposal to town meeting. And that was just put into the drive just a few minutes ago. So if you didn't see it, you should be able to see it now. So just to review, this is the bylaw to create the Community Preservation Committee. The committee will have nine members. According to Mass General Law, there needs to be one member from the Shrewsbury Conservation Commission, one member from the Historical Commission, one from the Planning Board, one from Parks, Recs and Cemetery, one from the Housing Authority, and those are all designated by those boards and committees. And then there will be four members that will be appointed at large by the Board of Selectmen, and the at-large members need to be residents of Shrewsbury. The terms at first will be staggered for the at-large members, with two appointees for three-year terms, one appointee for a two-year term, and one appointee for a one-year term. So if there is any other comment or discussion on this article, we are going to take a vote on it when everyone's comfortable.
I'm good.
Okay.
Madam, yeah. Madam Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the board establish and propose to town meeting bylaw as listed in the draft in 2021 for the Shrewsbury Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? So just as a point of clarification, at our last meeting, we discussed also putting out the call. Would that be something that we would be able to do after the vote, or do we need to do it while we're, before we vote?
We can certainly take care of that once the board votes.
Okay, so then if there's no further discussion, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So then the other piece of it was to go ahead and put out the call for interested residents to apply to be a part of the newly formed Community Preservation Committee, which will be the committee that oversees how the funds from the Community Preservation Act will be allocated. And then their appointment would be contingent upon the passage of this article at town meeting.
Yeah, we'll be happy to put that call out before the end of the week.
Okay, say we'll give it a couple of weeks for people to get their letters in. And then we can go ahead and identify those participants. Excellent, and I see that the School Committee is beginning to join us. Thank you for being with us tonight. We'll just give it a couple of minutes because it is a 7:30 joint meeting.
Hey Sandy.
Hey Jim, how you doing?
Great, thanks.
Hey Valerie, can you hear me?
Yes, again.
Jason said he's waiting to be let in. I don't know if you can see him in the waiting room.
I do not see him.
Let's see.
There he is.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
So we're just waiting for Dale, correct?
We just hung up, the Beal PTO, so he'll be here.
Wait, Lindsay.
I don't think there's a bird to get you started tonight, Beth.
No, I'm just sort of waiting for Dale, but I think I can get started, and then when he joins, he joins. It is 7:30. I'd like to thank Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins and members of the School Committee for meeting with us tonight. A substantial amount of work has been done since our last meeting to refine the fiscal projections and long-term funding needs to provide as much certainty as possible around the sustainability of this proposed override. I do just want to go back and give a little bit of background information for community members that maybe saw the article in the newspaper regarding what we're doing here and are tuning into this meeting without having watched prior meetings. So at the root of the situation lies a structural deficit, which is simply what happens when recurring expenses are increasing at a rate greater than recurring revenues. And our dependence on property tax as our main source of funding, combined with flat state aid dollars and limitations of Proposition 2 and 1/2, creates a yearly struggle to maintain services in our schools and municipal departments at a consistent level. We pride ourselves on our strong fiscal discipline and responsible use of tax dollars, leveraging state aid and grant money to address capital needs and maintain our infrastructure. Opportunities to reduce the deficit have been exhausted, and the only way to avoid severe reductions in services that will impact all residents by vastly diminishing core school and municipal services is through an operational override. A structural deficit cannot be corrected with one-time funds from stimulus money or COVID relief money because the needs are recurring and stimulus funds are often earmarked for a specific purpose or restricted by time. As the elected policymaking boards for the town were working together to change the narrative around needing an override by bringing forth a sustainable plan with clearly stated criteria for how dollars will be utilized and for how long, so that all stakeholders, including the residents, know what they can expect from their local government now and over the next few years. Since our last meeting, we heard from the MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Authority, our funding partners for the new Beal School, whom we reached out to when it became clear that our uncertain financial future jeopardizes our ability to open the Beal School as planned. Their response is not surprising and is consistent with our agreement. If the building is not used for a school, we will have to repay the funding. However, the letter did not provide a time demand that would require the opening to happen this fall. Opening the school is something we intend to do, and we take that commitment to the community and our agreement with the MSBA very seriously. The MSBA was pleased that we were forthcoming about our challenges and asked that we continue to update them as we work toward a solution. While this raises the stakes, it does not change the underlying reason for proposing this plan. We cannot continue to be a community that goes into every budget cycle resigned to our inability to improve operations, enhance core services, and further develop the quality of our educational program to protect a tax rate that is significantly below that of our neighboring communities and insufficient to meet most of our basic needs. Even with an operational override, our tax rate will continue to be lower than that of our neighbors, and the services received will be in line with what one would expect from a well-functioning local government. We have an opportunity to reimagine our vision for Shrewsbury by coming to a consensus together around our commitment with the community and between our two boards, which is the purpose for our meeting this evening. So with that, I would like to turn it over to the town manager, or actually, excuse me, to the Chair of the School Committee, Ms. Fritz, to provide any comments, and then the town manager will update us on the financial plan.
Thank you, Beth. I'm pleased we have the opportunity to discuss the current school budget gap again this evening. After a $1.9 million reduction in fiscal year 2021 budget in a reduction of almost 30 positions, the current fiscal year '22 budget gap of $4.9 million and eliminating 48.7 staff members creates an education emergency for our school district. The operational override model presented by Mr. Mizikar that would create a stabilization fund not only provides a current revenue solution to resolve the fiscal year '22 budget gap, but it will also begin to deal with the town's ongoing and predictable structural funding deficit. The School Committee believes this is the only option that will allow us to maintain the current staffing levels, programs we have in place now, and to open the new Beal Schools planned. While these immediate needs are extremely important, it also provides long-term opportunities for budget stability and predictability, the ability to advance the district's strategic priorities, and it creates a path for the regular communication and partnership with the Board of Selectmen regarding financial forecasts and their impacts on the annual town budgets. It also provides taxpayers with certainty around commitment to funding for school and municipal services for a set period of time. Based on Dr. Sawyer's and Mr. Collins' updated modeling of the school department budget through fiscal year 2026, using historical data and some anticipated needs in the coming years, without an operational override, there simply will not be the needed recurring revenue to help solve long-term funding needs. After several meetings, a public hearing, budget workshops, as well as receiving communication from community members, the School Committee is reiterating its request that the Board of Selectmen place an operational override, one that is consistent with the stabilization fund model presented by Mr. Mizikar on the May 4th annual town ballot. We look forward to having engaging, productive conversation with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I will turn it over to Mr. Mizikar, who will provide updates regarding the financial plans.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with members of the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen again this evening. I will run through a few slides with you this evening. As Ms. Cassavian said, I want to make sure that we properly recap the situation that we're facing, and I will run through a model that I think the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee are coalescing around. A recap where we are financially without an override, review what a structural deficit is, I'll present some high-level information regarding potential overrides and work through a recommendation with you. I'll be happy to talk about any tax bill or the tax bill impacts of those various models as well this evening. So just to recap, if we're looking at the financial picture for fiscal year '22, which begins this coming July, taxation continues to be our largest revenue source. It grows in limited means under provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, which allows us to increase our base tax levy by 2.5% annually and allows us to introduce new growth into that, which on average over the past five years has been slightly above $800,000. State aid has been very level, and it continues, since its level, continues to be a declining portion of the total revenue model that we utilize every year. In Schedule A receipts are very elastic and dependent on local economic activity, most heavily dependent on motor vehicle excise taxes, which require a continued supply of new cars to Shrewsbury residents or purchased by Shrewsbury residents. Also, meals tax and hotel motel tax, which are obviously significantly impacted through the events of the pandemic. This has led to a reduction in total revenues that can be anticipated in this category by over $1.5 million from what we experienced just in fiscal year '20, even though those revenues were muted in the fourth quarter because of the pandemic. Free cash is a one-time revenue source used for various means, but is currently supporting our operating budget and is not a long-term solution to solving any financial problems that we have for recurring expenses. In total, if we take all those revenues that we have available and look at the municipal budgets that have been requested and the school budget, look at our other expenses that are funded under the tax levy, we come to a position of almost $6 million in deficit for the year. So when we talk about a structural deficit, it's a simple concept. As Ms. Cassavian stated earlier, whenever ongoing revenues do not match ongoing expenses. And I think it's very evident through various models that have been presented by Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer, looking at the overall municipal spending in comparison to our comparable communities, that we have been fiscally responsible on the expenditure side. We've done a number of things to manage costs the best that we can. We are providing services to a growing and flourishing, thriving community, which we all want to be part of. And those expenses are just increasing more than our revenue model permits us. Property taxes is our largest revenue source and is muted through state law. So as you'll see, as recurring revenue can no longer satisfy the recurring expenses, we move into a position of a structural deficit. And those figures compound over time, and the gap becomes a cliff, and we're unable to sustain the type of operations that our residents have expected in prior years. So this is not a situation where adding anything new, it's simply the inability to maintain what residents have become accustomed to, whether that's educational or municipal services. One option that is available, that we obviously have been discussing quite significantly, is a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override, which enables us to seek additional tax revenue for operations from the residents by allowing them to vote on it through a ballot question during a local election, where a simple majority would provide additional funding above and beyond the limitations of Proposition 2 and 1/2. The override is simply just that. It's a tool that has been in place since 1980, whenever Proposition 2 and 1/2 was voted into law and was foreseen by those authors as the ability of local communities to control their own destiny and do what we are doing right now, determine whenever it is needed. Where 2.5% cannot sustain operations and seek the voter's input on whether additional revenue is merited or not. So over the past few months, at this point, we've been discussing a number of override models that can solve the structural deficit that we're facing over a number of years. And given the significant amount of work that goes into both the annual process, a long-term strategic planning of the school department and municipal departments, it seems that we have to strike a balance between going as far out into the future as we can with a model, but understanding the longer we extend the commitment to the community, the more money we need upfront. It's critical how we'll manage those dollars, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. On the screen here, you'll see that there's really, I think, two viable models that we can consider. Those rest at the 9.5 and $9 million request level. That would provide municipal operations with the ability to increase budgets by 3.5% year-over-year. And the school department to increase budgets between 4.25% and 4.5% year-over-year. With those models, certainly 4% is an option for growth as well within the school department, but given the fact that it's been clearly presented that 4.5% only provides for sustaining services and does not allow the school to commit to strategic priorities, I would begin to focus on those other two models of 4.25% and 4.5%, because I think a four-year model is a significant model that strikes that right balance between total request and total duration that we can commit to. So I want to move into the numbers, and I apologize for the slide. I know this is awful busy. There's a ton of numbers on there, but I think it's really important to be as transparent with the community as we possibly can with what this will take, the level of effort that we've all put into studying and developing the numbers, and why, at this point, I feel that a 9.5 million dollar override for four years is a sustainable model. So on the screen is the basic master balance sheet that we've been using for the last few years for the community whenever we present the budget. This model excludes utility revenues to kind of clear that up and not have them be a real factor, except for where the revenues come into the general fund or expenditures are pulled out of the general fund under limited circumstances. So you'll see the fiscal year '22 model within the yellow line. This is override, a request of $9.5 million. The following line below that is from the override stabilization. I'll jump down to the bottom part of the master balance sheet and come back to that in a minute. The lower part of the balance sheet is the charges broken out of education, municipal, shared operating support, and debt service. There's also a line there, blue with white text, "Transfer to override stabilization." So the key to being able to seek an override where revenue, increase in revenue is only provided for one year, but sustained in the base over the coming years and into the future, it's in perpetuity unless an underwrite is actually voted for, is to utilize a concept with an override stabilization fund. So you'll see in fiscal year '22, the request of $9.5 million in additional funds from the override would allow us to take $3.1 million and place it into that override stabilization fund. So in that first year, we'd actually not be spending all the dollars that we are requesting from the community. And the sole purpose of that request is to prolong the duration of this. You will see the same would occur in fiscal year '23, although no new additional override dollars are coming into the community. The 9.5 million is put within the base of the tax levy. You'll see the tax levy increase from 79 to 92 year-over-year. And then year two, we are also putting $1.6 million into that override stabilization fund. This model that I have on the screen assumes 4.25% growth for the education line item there at the bottom of the screen, and 3.5% growth for municipal budget. Under those scenarios, you'll see that we begin drawing down out of the override stabilization fund in fiscal year '24 and '25. And in the lowest row on the screen, you'll note that we have a balanced budget over all four of those years. So we would be committing through this model to for, having a four-year commitment to the community where we would not seek any additional funds for them by overriding Proposition 2 and 1/2. It creates a very stable environment with sufficient funds carried through fiscal year '25 and '26 that may provide a slight possibility of getting additional years out of it or have a solid base moving forward, which could lower any additional requests in out years if an override would be needed for fiscal year '26. So this very much is a model that will need to be repeated unless something changes with Proposition 2 and 1/2, because it is the most sustainable model that we found through our studies. So I'm just kind of, the slide shows the same thing, but just the four years that a commitment could be agreed to for, and reduces some of the additional line items on there to provide clarity on how the stabilization fund is increased and decreased over this four-year period. So an override stabilization, a special purpose override stabilization fund would have to be voted on by town meeting to be established as soon as this annual town meeting in spring. And then town meeting, as they are the legislative body of the community and control appropriations, would consider the use of these funds at every town meeting as we access these dollars over time and manage our budget process as proposed. So finally, I just wanted to take the opportunity to review the various tax bill impacts to different segments of the community. I've used this slide in the past, but just a reminder, on the left-hand column, those percentages equal the amount of homes that are included at or below those values. So for instance, in the third row down, 50% of the homes in the community are valued at $441,200 or less. So if one's home is valued at $441,200 on the 9.5 million dollar override model, you can expect an annual tax increase of $645. All homes valued below that would obviously be less than that. And then the average single-family home in the community is $481,400, and that would be a $704 increase. In the column on the far right, the cost increment, cost increment per $500,000 is shown. So that simply means if an override was voted at 8.5, only 25 additional dollars for the average, excuse me, for a home valued at $324,600 would be needed annually in order to ask for a $9.5 million override. So that, so one of the benefits of having a heavily residential community with a, with With um a large tax base like we do in Shrewsbury, over six billion dollars in values, is that the incremental costs are very small. As it's spread among a a large number of tax taxable parcels and properties. So uh at this point, I just wanted to to pause and happy to answer any other questions. Any questions that there may be from uh the board selectman or the school committee through the chair.
Thank you for that presentation, you can talk, go ahead, Mr. Kane.
Kevin, um one of of the, I guess, a bit of good news, but a complicating bit of good news is any money that comes from the federal. Uh recently passed and signed into law, federal um assistance. Uh if we use it to supplant current spending, what's the impact on it? I realize there's a whole host of of um details to be worked out, the exact amount of. Strings attached to certain types of spending for certain purposes within certain timelines. But certainly by the time voters uh if asked, we would be in a much better position to. Have a more complete answer as to what monies might be available for what duration of time. How would those monies, to the best that you can predict today? Um supplant the need for the full authorization if it is requested and granted by the voters, thank you.
Thank you, um certainly a question that um well, certainly something that I've been thinking a lot of and. Assumed quite frankly that I would get a question, so I did prepare a couple of slides for that this evening. Yeah, so I, there definitely seems to be for the first time and in my understanding of of any recent. Uh stimulus packages from the federal government, regardless of the reason that they provided, that there may be a very broad opportunity for use. Uh to supply it um municipal revenues and make up for uh lost revenues. Um from prior years uh related to the pandemic, so um I do have a couple of slides as I noted. And I'll just walk through everything that that I am confident to present this evening. And uh I've run one model that I'd like to share with everyone uh with regards to that, so. Um I previously reported that um we received information uh from some federal spreadsheets. That indicated the town could receive between seven and a half and eight point four million dollars. And unfortunately, that does not seem to be coming to fruition uh in the aid package that was passed and the best information that we have. Although not an official source through the state department of revenue. Um but again, through some updated information that's available uh on the US senate uh Democrat's site. Uh appears that uh the town will receive three point eight million dollars in general aid to the town. There's a separate package in in bucket of funding of direct educational aid. Um and this number may change just a little bit, uh given the fact that we don't have a functioning county uh government. That we reside under, so um there's still remains uncertainty as Mr. Kane mentioned. And this is certainly one time funding, so we need to be very careful with how we use this. In fast, uh the Max Task Taxpayers Foundation said just that in a report that they released uh just last week. That said that uh communities uh should be excited about the use of these funds, we need to be very careful on how they're used. As not create problems down the road, and that's something, of course, that we're we're focused on. So um there certainly will be benefits uh to the utilization of these funds. And uh given this complicated question, I took some time uh to to develop a model where we that we may be able to use. If everything comes to fruition, to lessen the impact uh of the override on taxpayers without harming ourselves in the future. So um again, a lot of information on the screen, but just trying to show everyone the calculations as best we can. Uh this uh slide shows uh fiscal year twenty through fiscal year uh twenty five. I wouldn't want anyone to walk away from um this presentation without knowing that there's a lot of uncertainty that's left in this. Uh hence the uh the disclaimer at the top of the screen for discussion purposes only, however. Assuming that an option may uh be clarified for us where we would be able to at least. Utilize this, that three point eight million dollars in stimulus funding to. Make up the gap between um what we received in fiscal year twenty. And what we're projecting uh in the out years for local receipts, so that's my assumption that I use in this model. So you see in fiscal year twenty, we we brought in eleven point six million dollars in local receipts. Um it is uh the second line after the green line on the screen there. Um and then um I'm projecting uh three percent growth rates for local receipts, which is their their twenty year. Excuse me, their ten year uh compounded average growth rate that would take us till fiscal year twenty five to get back to that level or exceed it. So I took the difference between FY twenty five projection and and the uh FY twenty number, excuse me, the FY. Yes, that's right, uh the the projection of what we're using for uh fiscal year twenty two. And the fiscal year twenty number, I took the difference of that and I spread that out over time. Um and I I was able to find a model where we could pull in about one point four million dollars in stimulus funds in that green line. Mine, reduce the uh impact of the override on taxpayers, uh equally offsetting those amounts. Uh pulling the uh at actual use of override funds in fiscal year twenty two down from nine and a half million dollars. Eight point seven um and then slowly feeding uh. The revenue funds in that would have been authorized uh at nine point five million dollars over the fall in three years. Uh as we wean ourselves off in the federal stimulus funds. So the federal stimulus funds appear in total to have to be spent no later than December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Uh which means we could use them um as shown on the screen. Um and you can see that I've balanced the stimulus and the override uh revenue sources to provide a net zero impact. Uh on the total operating position of the town. Yes, you will see in the bottom line that there are deficits that are shown uh within those budget years. Um but those are uh just really are a result of the impact of not having a proposition two and a half. Uh applied to the entire override, which we can certainly make up, I'm not worried about a twenty or thirty thousand dollar deficit. Uh we can find those funds uh or adjust the numbers up top appropriately, so. Uh it's a little complicated, I apologize for that, but this is a model that could work where we use uh the stimulus dollars to reduce. Um the nine and a half million dollar override request, uh just to be very clear, we would ask for nine and a half million dollars. We would receive that authorization, uh and then we would choose not to raise uh the levy to the full uh levy limit. Every year uh which should give us the opportunity to, by the end of twenty twenty five. Experience the full benefit of that override uh without uh fully burdening that of the taxpayers in year one, if we're allowed to do all that.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, one follow up if I could.
Absolutely.
Kevin, for our next meeting, could you update this to the extent you have additional information, then could you also add to your slide on? Impact um what this would reduce that impact uh to being i- if it all came together. As you have outlined in conceptual uh purpose for this evening.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I see a hand raised from Mr. McGee, Dr. McGee.
So uh an alternate approach to the stimulus funding, would it be fair to say that if we were to have a nine and a half million dollar override? Fully apply it and then take advantage of the stimulus funds as they came in, that we would delay the uh date that was necessary. To get another override in the future.
That, that certainly could be an option, yes, if you kept the override numbers at. Uh the nine million dollars in fiscal year twenty one and applied uh the stimulus dollars. And appropriated them into the override stabilization fund, that uh could be a model that worked, yes.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. So I think we're okay to move forward then to the key objectives, which would be discussing our draft override agreement. Documents of which there are two, um we have a document that will be the commitment we make with the community. And then there is another document that is um more of an internal document, which is the commitment between the board of selectmen and the school committee. Um so if we want to start with the one for our commitment to the community, which would be the outward facing document. Um but before we do, Mr. Miskar, I did want to just ask, um for people who might be interested, where would they be able to find the slides? Um tomorrow.
Yep, we will uh provide notice through social media and the website, but they'll be located on the town manager's budget page along with prior slides that we presented.
Great, thank you. Because I believe everyone has a copy of the framework document. It's called override statement to the residents of Shrewsbury, and I don't know if it's possible to put it up on the screen.
I can certainly do that, yeah.
Of who might want to take a look at it, but again, this will be available for you on the town manager's budget page tomorrow. I would think as well, is that correct?
That is correct.
Just wait a minute for this to come up on the screen.
Okay.
Do you want to take us through it?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So this is a document that's a commitment um from the or by the board of selectmen and the school committee. As the elected leaders of the town of Shrewsbury uh to convey uh their commitment to the community. With respect to an override question uh for consideration for May fourth. The goal of the override uh through this commitment would be to uh maintain or improve quality municipal and educational services. To a level that the residents of Shrewsbury expect for at least the next four years, so that would be fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, twenty four and twenty five. This document includes a concise summary about the background of the situation that we face with proposition two and a half and the structural deficit. And then specifically, there are commitments that are laid out jointly by the school committee and the board of selectmen to the community. With regards to several things, uh first and foremost, again, it is a four year commitment where uh no additional override requests would be requested. You know, unless there's some unforeseen substantial uh catastrophe that the community faces. Within that four year period, uh there would be an agreement, uh at least through this document as drafted. Uh the educational operating budget increases would uh be capped at four in a quarter percent annually. Municipal operating budget increases would be capped at three and a half percent annually. Um in shared operating expenses, budget increases would be up a six point one five annually. Now, shared operating expenses um called operating support within the uh general budget. Um includes things that benefit both the town and school department, uh they're largely fixed costs or. Out of the direct control, significant control of management, they include things like health insurance, liability insurance. Unemployment um payments and uh insurance responsibility and federal taxes that the town pays as an employer. Uh for all of our employees. So those would be, those three lines would be trended and capped uh on an annual basis. Those operating caps would only be able to be exceeded if revenues exceed the forecast amount that uh I just had on the screen. And were presented as of today's uh forecast model, which will be published and included with this document. Uh and those caps could be exceeded by one half of one percent in any given year, uh so long as there's no impact on the four year duration of this commitment. Uh we would commit to uh keeping taxpayers um up to speed. Uh through transparent documents and publishing on our website. And we're also, the the boards are also committing to minimizing the the tax impact on seniors and others with income challenges. Uh and although they're limited, publicizing uh the ability uh qualification requirements for residents to seek those relief. How to do so and kind of do a better uh job uh with making sure that residents are aware of what's available to them. Uh and the board of selectmen will pursue uh options for additional tax relief programs to the extent permissible by law. Specific commitments uh as drafted uh by the board of selectmen would be to incre- increase community engagement. Ensure resources are prioritized consistent with the desire of our residents and continue to manage our debt well and refund. Uh any debt that we have to uh take advantage of our triple A bond rating. Uh s- uh school committee commitments uh would be to open the Beal School as planned. Phase in the restoration of cuts that were made in the fiscal year twenty one budget over this four year period and. Pursue the existing strategic priorities uh that are currently in place and continue to uh review those. Uh over the timeline of the override, and then finally generally maintain a strong financial position. Uh continuous review improvement of financial policies, reserves to ensure stability, uh the maintenance of the uh triple A bond rating. So again, this is a commitment by the elected officials of the community to the community uh in advance of asking an override question. To show uh what services would be provided uh with the additional funding that's being requested.
Thank you, and thank you very much for all of the work that you put into this. For the viewing public, this document is a culmination of many hours of work between Mr. Miskar, Dr. Sawyer. Mr. Collins and these two boards, um and this is very unlike anything that we've ever put forth to the community before. Um we did not have a an agreement like this in twenty fourteen, and I think that this really shows the amount. Of um serious consideration that has gone into bringing this question to this point. Um so I would like to pause here and allow for any other comments or questions from members of either board regarding this document. Ms. Fritz.
I agree with you, Beth, I think this is unlike any document I've seen in all my years uh working with the school committee. Uh working with the board of selectmen, it is a commitment to the community that um we want to make sure. That everything that we are doing is first of all transparent and that it is a commitment that. There's a set period of time i- as well as a stable budget, that they know we will work within municipal and schools. And everything that we're doing before this was to be as cost efficient as possible, but this is a uh. In writing commitment to the community that we will continue to do that, and as Beth said, there's been a lot of work behind the scenes. I I know some people may not have been, you know, knew that was happening, but there's been a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes. And we had a budget workshop last night as well as the um board of selectmen to go over the details to make sure that this is something. That both boards felt was doable into the future and that would be able to meet based on our projections, the um service needs. That we have for both areas of the budget, so I think this is a really good document, um and this is uh something that will fit the community's needs. For a period of time that will also give the taxpayers that um the understanding that they need. And the security they need that we are going to be able to do this and not have to come back in a short period of time.
Anyone else? Okay. So the next step will be for each of our individual boards, oh, sorry, Lindsay, I just now see your hand up, no?
Yeah, it's quite a, quite all right, continue forward.
Okay, because I was gonna say the next step is to vote on this, each of our boards would vote on this. So I mean, I'm I'm happy to let you go first, school committee, if you want to start, Ms. Fritz.
Sure, um and I think it just would be a motion, may I have a motion that the school committee accept? The override statement to the residents of Shrewsbury dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty one, and I would need a roll, well, first I'd need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote is required, Dr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Pallage.
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Wensky.
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good, and now we'll move on and have the board of selectmen uh take a similar vote. Okay, very good. And now we'll move on and have the Board of Selectmen take a similar vote.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the document as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's no further discussion. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion carries. So with that, we have an agreement with the community and we can move on to the next document, which again, I will ask if Mr. Miskar could put that up on the screen for us. And that is the framework between the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This document takes the agreement or commitment to the community kind of at a lower level and defines some what-if scenarios and acknowledgements between the two boards to both preserve and enhance the working relationship and provide clarity to all policymakers over the course of this override should have passed. So again, it reiterates many of the same aspects as the commitment to the community and provide some commitments between the two boards on how we'll approach things over the course of the next four years and hopefully becomes, and I'm confident will become the new normal between these two boards. It talks about the different growth patterns in general up at the top. And then we start to get into some of the more detailed scenarios once we get to section three of the document. Of course, this is a unique circumstance where we're looking at having a significant amount of potential stimulus or other or could be applied to other significant non-recurring revenue over the course of the override period and how those would be handled. It provides a commitment to continue to use this aid, especially with regards to the pandemic aid for maximizing in-person education services. And it, that often obviously is widespread and includes municipal operations when it comes to building and then the core educational services that are provided directly by the school department. It provides a prohibition or extreme limitation on the use of any non-recurring revenue source for recurring expenditures as not to build a unsustainable cliff into our financial model. And it provides for the ability to use any aid that's allowed to be used for, to offset revenue in the two particular areas that are defined here, which will benefit the taxpayers by either extending the duration of the override or reducing the tax levy for one or more years. And it requires the identification of a way to supplant the use of the one-time funds within the timeframe that the override commitment is made to the community. So therefore, this document would prohibit either board from, again, creating a cliff that would be much more challenging within the override period or beyond it because of financial decisions that are made for the short term. Further, there's a much more extensive discussion on the use of non-forecast recurring revenue and simply that is any revenue that would be coming in for a recurring source like state aid, the general tax levy through new growth or local receipts as the economy recovers and various provisions on how that revenue can be applied within the framework of the commitment that was just agreed to by both bodies. And it refers back to, again, the March 16th, 2021, today's revenue forecast as the starting point for annual conversations. And that document would be updated annually. So those recurring revenues would be available and be able to be put to use for the benefit of the community. They're going to be used sustainably to meet any unfunded requirements within the limitations of the statement of the community. It would be the source of funding that would allow for the school budget to increase by that additional one-half of 1%. And the municipal budget to increase by that additional one-half of 1% as agreed to in the commitment. And then provides clear provisions in sections two through four to the community on how those funds would be divided. So 25% of any non-forecast recurring revenue would be appropriated to the town's general stabilization fund until such a time that we met the policy levels of the Board of Selectmen's 2020 policies. The following 10% of total revenues forecast above the town manager's forecast would be appropriated into the override stabilization balance. The remaining 65% would be appropriated for purposes for other purposes and divided between the school budget and the town budget on a 60-40% split. And there's some various, very detailed provisions on how to divide the funds up further than that through mutual agreement and consent. Again, everything being within the limitations of the statement that was just voted on in the commitment to the community. So a couple of other provisions to use that funding for one-time expenditures and capital improvements. But really, the context of this agreement, as I said, is a much lower level dive into how we're going to manage dollars on a year-by-year basis that weren't foreseen within the initial forecast, given all the information that we have at this time.
Thank you. And again, this document is the result of just hours of work by Mr. Miskar, by Dr. Sawyer, by Mr. Collins. Just last night, our two boards were in separate workshops going over this document. And here we are, you know, 24 hours later, ready to potentially vote on this agreement. And I think that that just speaks volumes about where the focus has been on a problem that we all see is extremely urgent to bring forth some sort of solution to the residents. So if there are any questions or comments on this document, let me know. Raise your hand. Mrs. Fritz?
Again, thank you for all the work that everybody has put into this. And thank you. I know we had some work a few weeks ago kind of wordsmithing and taking the suggestions of the School Committee into consideration. I know you did a lot of that, so we do appreciate the fact that you listened to what we were thinking and really incorporated it into this. So thank you very much on that.
All right, anyone else? Dr. McGee, I noticed you turned your mic on. Did you have a comment? Are you just ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
So Mrs. Fritz, I'll let you go ahead and have your board vote first then.
All right, thank you. I have a motion that the School Committee accept the override framework between the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee dated March 16th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mr. Pallage?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, and we're going to do the same thing, this time with the Board of Selectmen.
Madam Chair?
Mr. LeBeau?
Madam Chair, I move the board move the document using the, employing the same language that Jeff Fritz just used.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So that's another unanimous vote, which I think just shows just how much of a collaborative effort this was. So that's the last item pretty much in this section, which is the next steps. And for the viewing public, oh, hold on just a second. Dr. Sawyer, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ms. Cassavian. You can go ahead and continue. I just want to make a comment before we wrap up.
No, go right ahead.
Well, I just want to first thank both boards for their votes tonight on both of these documents. I think that this approach is fiscally responsible. It's fiscally transparent. It preserves the value of the town services that residents enjoy. And obviously, from our perspective, it preserves the public education value that our community expects. It's going to provide stability, and I'm not sure I can overstate from my perspective how valuable the stability going forward should an override question to take this approach be put on the ballot by the Selectmen and the, and the community supports that. The ability to plan going forward and not be worried year over year about what we might have to cut and rather be knowing we're sustaining what we're doing and building upon that in terms of what we'll be able to do as an organization to focus on quality and delivering on our mission is, is a, will be a huge improvement from my perspective. I do believe that this choice that the town will have if a question is put forward will be really a crucial one. I think it's a, it's a real true crossroads moment for our community because not having the revenue and having to move forward with the kind of reduction plans we're talking about really would be extremely damaging to the school district. Whereas what we're talking about this evening, this kind of approach, I think is going to be hugely beneficial. And I can't speak for the municipal departments, but it seems to me, from my perspective as a resident, it would also improve the quality of life that the municipal departments can provide as well. So I appreciate the advocacy of the School Committee in terms of the needs of the school department. I really appreciate the strategic approach that the Board of Selectmen are taking to this need that the town has. And I also just want to thank, certainly, Mr. Collins for all the work he's done on making sure the numbers for the school department are transparent and presented in a way that are understandable. And I especially want to thank Mr. Miskar. I think his leadership to bring this process forward has been outstanding. We really deeply appreciate the partnership with him as executives of the respective organizations. And I could not be more pleased with this outcome this evening. And I look forward and hope that the next steps are able to be taken. And I hope that the community supports this approach, which I think is a very wise one. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So the next steps, as Dr. Sawyer just alluded to, would be when our board, the Board of Selectmen, comes together for our next regular meeting, which is next Tuesday night, the 23rd. And at that time, on our agenda, we will have the consideration of a question to put before the voters for an override. And the terms will be discussed and, you know, they'll be in accordance with what we've discussed and voted on this evening. So if there's nothing else to discuss at this point, we will be ready to adjourn.
Yes. Okay, just one, one quick thing. I'd like to, I'd like to echo what Superintendent Sawyer said, but I'd like to add that on all of my years on the board, this has been the most comprehensive, the most laborious collaboration between the school department and the Board of Selectmen during that whole tenure. It, I don't know if we could even add up all the time that went into this effort over the past couple of months. And I just think it's really a testament to to all of us and our commitment to make the town, you know, the type of town that we want it to be, and our efforts to try to do it in a way that's fiscally responsible and constrained and give certainty to the residents. So I just really can't say enough about the collaboration and the, and the amount of work that went in between the two boards and between the school administration and the town administration to get this done. And I hope that it came true with the residents of the community because I really think it's monumental.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yeah, and I also really want to thank the Board of Selectmen for partnering with us this evening. And I really do believe that our boards have made a strategic, a new strategic beginning tonight to benefit the town. And I want to thank Mr. Miskar especially for championing this new approach to the town and to begin working on the structural deficit, this dilemma that we've been dealing with for such a long time. It's a new opportunity to change how we commit to funding municipal and school services. And this new process really represents the shared value that we all believe in and this commitment to school and municipal services and that we're going to provide the best possible services. We say this all the time. And many of us have worked together for a very long time, and we really do believe in this. But this is a new process that we can all begin to work on that will bring us out of what we've dealt with for such a long time. And I do want to thank Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins, who have put a significant amount of time and effort into this along with Mr. Miskar in a very collaborative, across-the-isle kind of effort. Our budget challenges have really been compounded by the pandemic. We're trying to, you know, go back to some full in-person learning on top of the budget issues. And you know, I think our students are much better served when Dr. Collins, Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer are devoting time to working on district goals and priorities and new initiatives rather than trying to reduce the budget in order to do the least time to educational services. So I just want to thank everyone who's been involved, all of my committee members, all of the Board of Selectmen. I think this is a really great path that we're on. You know, I really hope that this override is put on the ballot for our May 4th election and that it passes. This is going to be a really good financial resource to get us to where we need to be for school and municipal services. So thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you. All right, so.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could?
Go ahead, Mr. Miskar.
I, I, I do just have to take the, the, a few moments to thank Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins. You know, we spent a lot of time together very professionally and directly, you know, working through these documents and the numbers and trying to come up with the best solution. I'm really proud of these documents that we've produced in concert with the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen. And I do think that tonight is monumental, although it's, it's, you know, certainly not the passage of an override. It's, it's the clearest path that I think we can put forward and expressing the community what our intentions are. Just want to thank them for their time and I appreciate the, the hard work that they've put in on this. So thank you very much.
Okay, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move the Board of Selectmen adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Thank you and have a good evening. Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.